Okay. We traditionally have our students join us, so let me mention something because the students will not be joining us. But the young man, Logan Keith, who makes, as part of the two-person team, making a report to each of the school committee meetings, created a video involving a number of instructional and support staff members, which was a very impressive tossing of a roll of toilet paper as if it was handed throughout the district, person to person. Each staff member offering their words of encouragement to our students. It was very well done. So in lieu of Logan being present, let me mention that. If I may, Joe, if you want to call it, call to order, go ahead.
Sam, as we have four on my clock, so call the meeting, and we have a quorum present for this Zoom meeting. As unusual as it is, we'll call this meeting to order and begin with secretary's report. Mr. Yetz.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the meeting minutes of the regular committee meeting of March 5th, 2020, and I make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
I will second that.
Motion made and second to approve the minutes as written and prepared for us. Questions, comments, discussion?
Is it clear who offered, Joe, is it clear who offered the second for the recording?
It was me.
Oh, I'm sorry, the second was Mitch.
Sorry. You want us to say our name, Doc, when we say that?
That's helpful, I think.
Okay, perfect. Yep.
All right. And no questions, comments, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, the treasurer's report. Ms. Oger.
Good evening, everybody. So we have two treasurer's reports this month on February 29th, 2020. The ending cash balance was $7,424,495.69. There was $5,937,916.09 in general funds, and $1,486,579.60 in project funds. During the month of February, we did receive the transportation money that we usually receive in January. It was just slightly delayed, but we did, I'm happy to report that we did receive that money. The payroll and warrant expenses were pretty normal for a month of February, and our ending balance at the end of the month was as presented.
I believe we approved that last month. I made the presentation for February when Ms. Oger wasn't there.
I think it was January that was approved last month.
Yes, this I don't believe was ready at the time of last meeting.
Yes, that's true.
I'll make the motion.
Made by Mr. Hanrady, second by Mr. Finn. His comments discussion.
Yep.
Fitzpatrick.
Yeah, Barbara, there's a date difference in the posted agenda versus the report itself. Don't think that's significant, but just for clarification, the agenda says February 29th. I believe the report is February 28th. If you take a look at your, the written report versus the posted agenda, it's just a difference of the date. So for the record, you might want it to be one or the other.
It should be the 29th. I don't have the report in front of me.
Wait just a second. Tim, would you put the report back up?
Yeah, I'm looking at it. It looked like it was just a probably a standard.
Yeah, it says the 28th. I probably neglected to change it to the 29th due to the leap year.
Yep.
But it is, it is, I mean, the 29th was a Saturday. There were no banking transactions on the 29th. So, but it is a statement as of the 29th, and the record should reflect that.
Perfect. Thank you.
We do have a motion on the table to accept that report.
I'll second that. Dave Bartlett.
Questions, comments, discussion, other than the modification, if you will, or update to the February 29th for the report?
Just one question, if I may, Mr. Chairman, same question we usually ask. Barbara, do we have all member assessments are in and completed to date?
Yes, all member assessments were received timely.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor of approving this report as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. That report is approved and accepted.
Mr. Chairman, I also have the March 2020 report.
Tim, would you put up that report, please?
So the cash balance at the end of March was $6,708,432.02. Local funds were $5,303,086.29, and project funds were $1,405,343.73. We did during the month receive the Chapter 71, which is the transportation supplemental money, which is noted there as $42,954. We did get a significant amount of grants in, which was good to see. We had three payrolls posted during the, no, we had two payrolls, I'm sorry, posted during the month of March. And I did want to mention and bring to your attention, if you look at the interest line, there is a negative amount reported on the interest, and that's because the district incurred an unrealized loss on our investment of the OPEB money. So I'm sure everyone's well aware that the market has taken a significant hit during the month of January. I mean, March, I'm sorry, during the month of March, and it's also taken a hit subsequent to the end of March. So I would anticipate that we could see another decline when I report next months, because of course I report the investments a month in arrears. The income on investments is a month in arrears because of the timing of those three ports. So I anticipate we're going to see another loss in April, and I'm somewhat optimistic that it will stabilize after that as the economy starts to ease up on some of the restrictions that we have due to COVID-19, if that indeed is the case, and we should see that reversing itself. But I did, in full disclosure, want to mention, this is not earnings on any of our real cash in the bank. These are investments on the OPEB, and you have to think long-term when it comes to investments. And, you know, it's not real unless we were to cash everything out today. So I think it's important to keep that in mind, so I don't want anyone to panic at this point. I'll make the motion to accept.
Second.
Made by Ms. Mitchell.
Second made by Chad Hanrady.
Motion made and second. Any other questions, comments, discussion for Ms. Oger?
This is Anthony. I have a question.
Yes.
I have two questions. I'll ask them both, and then I'll let her answer. Number one, do we expect any direct COVID-19-related expenses over the remainder of the school year? And if we do, my second question is, should we have a separate category for those so that we could see those outside of the normal budget plan?
So I know that Curtis and Lana have a lot of procedures in place to collect that. So I think I'm gonna ask if Curtis or Lana want to talk to that specifically, because I know that they are doing work in that specific area.
Yes, so I'll start off by saying, Lorna has been doing the greatest share of the work in terms of collecting some of the supplies and materials related to PPE that were donated to Milford Hospital. We've been attending grant seminars to determine allowability of those expenditures, and through Perkins, that has been allowed, right down to the donation of equipment such as 3D printers, believe it or not. I was a little bit surprised to hear something that granular in terms of the allowability. We are also producing masks at this point, and the question was raised on the filament part in terms of the supplies and materials utilized to make at least the head portion, the headband of the mask that is ultimately attached there, too. So all of those, as long as they are part of that instructional process and are given to qualified institutions such as hospitals, that they're actually encouraging such things. As far as the supplies and materials by the facilities department, we've seen an uptick, obviously, in terms of what masks we could get, a hefty supply of gloves, and then, of course, some of the sanitation wipes, you know, like Lysol type with the chlorine in it, and then hand sanitizer spray. Not every bit of that under the guidelines can be qualified, because if it's for just your regular, normal cleaning, that would just be regular supplies. What we're doing is quantifying that in terms of the purchase, dealing back with Jim Broshu to determine the quantity that would be related to COVID. We're not specifically carving out a cost code for it, because quite frankly, it's not that significant to us. I think so far, we've quantified maybe $6,000 to $7,000, and that's being submitted to FEMA for reimbursement. So we are quantifying it on the forms for reimbursement rather than, you know, a separate accounting in the general ledger in terms of the purchase requisitions and purchase orders. I don't know if that answered your question. Lorna, if you want to add to it, feel free.
Yep. No, what you said was accurate. I'm in the process of trying to assess if we can get any recovery on the donated PPE equipment we gave to Milford Regional Medical Center, and for the additional costs that Jim's encouraged to try to disinfect BBT and keep our health and wellness of the building in good order. We are seeking some reimbursement on that, but other than those two categories, that's all I'm aware of, so that's accurate.
Thank you.
Hey, Dave Bartlett, if I may, can I assume that we're realizing some savings while school is not in session?
That would be correct, yes. And our job now, and I think we'll get to that when we have the discussion on the transportation, the district still has to meet its net school spending requirements. And so we need to look at what is required under the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and then determine how best, like, for instance, we know we'll have significant savings in electricity. We'll have savings in water, very little in gas at this point, just because we're hitting the summer months. Transportation, we will see savings on, especially as it relates to field trips and sports trips. So any of those things, I think we need to redirect back to, you know, building up infrastructure. And this is just an idea. It hasn't been vetted or anything. But in terms of our long, our distance learning model, that was just really developed quickly over a short period of time. So maybe looking at one-to-one, you know, laptop or some sort of a Chromebook-style learning environment, any way we can build up the wireless connectivity, all the technology that's needed to really make that more successful. That's one thing we could look at. But we're going to redirect those dollars to things that would be beneficial to the school, or quite frankly, things that have been pushed off because of budget limitations when we developed the budget for such things as equipment and one-time expenditures that just couldn't make it in.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a point, Joe.
Yes.
And knowing full well that the school committee follows the treasurer's reports very closely as part of their due diligence, I asked the treasurer by speaking as a follow-up to the business manager to have her add the clarifications that she provided relative to the loss, although many would be happy to lose only that amount in their stock portfolio relative to the rare experience of having a minus in that particular account. So I appreciate Barbara clarifying that and providing insight. For Anthony Yetz's question, the initial source for reimbursement for costs of that nature was FEMA, and I called upon Lorna and Curtis to pounce on that, and they did immediately. So we continue to compile any eligible expenses and forward it to FEMA in the same spirit which we chase any other money. As far as Dave Bartlett's question, yes, all schools should have a reduced cost in their operation if they're not in session. So we're not alone in that. Sorry to delay the motion.
That's fine. Clarification is very, very much. Any other questions? Seeing none, hearing none, we do have the motion on the table. All those in favor of approving this report as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With a lot of you on mute, if you want to raise your hand as an aye, that's fine, too, rather than worrying about getting your voice. I'm muted. Next item on the agenda. Curtis.
All right. The first two items, 4.1 and 4.8, are dealing with the vote that is required by the school committee in support of the total project funding agreement, which is Form 3011. I might just have you quickly look at item 4.1B and look at the bottom of the page where it talks about the total project funds which agreed to Form 3011. That is.
Kurt, do you want to encourage Tim to post that?
Tim, can I encourage you to post that, please?
He's encouragable.
Okay, so which, I have four documents for roof repair: bid summary, fund transfer request, motion to award, and project funding request. Which one?
So I think if you can focus on 4.1A, which is the fund transfer request, inter-fund borrowing, and item 4.1B is the approve the project funding. I was drawing the attention to that second item, 4.1B, just so the committee understood the full cost that we were looking at. And if you can't get it up, that's fine. I'll just read it, because we can take these in order. It's basically $1,486,000.
Everything's still not labeled to that. Which one do you want first, though?
Pull up the approve project funding link.
There is none.
4.1B? It's on the.
All I have in the files is bid summary, fund transfer request motion, motion to award, construction, project funding request motion.
The project funding request.
Project funding request, that's fine. That's the very first item.
All right.
I'm working split screen, so I've got both running.
And this is the fund transfer request, let's see. Okay, that's okay. The 4.1B, that's the second item. But I was just drawing the committee's attention. If you'll scroll down just a little bit, because this is ultimately what we're going to vote, but the project even listed earlier there is $1,486,419. 919 square feet. In order for us.
Did we lose him?
I think we did. He locked up. Now he's muted.
All right.
There we go.
And then, once we start receiving reimbursements from the MSBA at the 55%, that will ultimately be paying back those funds over time, and it'll be a quick payback. The project is short, and we get, I mean, on a monthly basis, we'll be submitting for reimbursement along the way. So just so you understand the total cost of the project, and in fact, you'll see what we're going to be making the motion for, which is taking it from the facility expansion and putting it into the roof repair capital project. That's going to equate to $1,486,000. So in order for us to do that, we actually need to show item 4.1A, which is the motion, and it's a fund transfer request. Is that something that you can locate?
Joe, you have the motion at your fingertips?
There it is.
There it is. Okay.
Motion on the table.
Perfect.
Well, I need the motion first.
I chat him when he make the motion.
I second it, Albraza.
Motion made and second to approve this balance transfer. Curtis, that's what this is. This is a transfer. To temporarily fund the roof replacement project. Questions, comments, discussion?
Kurt?
Yes.
Do you want to share with the committee at this juncture the reduced exposure that we have, although we still have to comply with MSBA full amounts, but that the bids now are, as predicted by you, by Jimmy Broshu and others, more advantageous than MSBA thought they might be? Can you share with the committee's benefit, the delta, or the lesser exposure versus the first scenario as they take this action?
Sure. One of the biggest pieces is going to be the construction, and the budget for that was $1,129,684 on the project funding agreement. Our bid came in at $823,900. That was almost $306,000. So while we will be making this transfer temporarily, as soon as we award the contract, we now will show that we've got the funds available. I will be transferring that amount back to the fund that we borrowed from, and then we'll proceed as we get the remaining reimbursements from the MSBA. We'll slowly chip away at the difference between the 769 and the 305. Does that answer the question?
Well, it's my intent to make the committee aware of the reduced exposure while the project proceeds as in the timetable that we intended.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, Doc.
Yes.
If I may, was that, I think the last time we met, we explained that that was due to the fact that the cost, labor costs that the association was using were much higher than what it actualized out in.
In summary, yes, okay. But obviously, since the MSBA governs the rules, and they provide the 55% reimbursement, we play by their rules.
Yeah, it's that golden rule thing, isn't it?
It might be helpful to note, too, when they're looking at this, they're looking at all projects across the Commonwealth, and what they don't want is people arbitrarily lowballing these estimates. And you've got to think about the risk involved. If, for instance, we went with, I think, you know, at one point, we got like, oh, let's go with $23 a square foot. If you got the bids in, and it was actually more, and you certified this, that lower amount with the MSBA, you could never get reimbursed for anything above the amount that they originally approved. So it is conservative. What it does do is makes us, in this case, because we sell fund, we have to come up with the full value. The good news is, is the last time with the treasurer's help, we did borrowings from the general fund, so it's an in lieu of. This year, we didn't even have to touch that. We had the funds available due to all the matching requirements under the Mass Skills Capital Grant and planned projects. And because this is going to be so temporary, we're going to be able to return those funds back, I would say within the span of maybe even four months in total, we should have that return.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor of approving this fund transfer, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The transfer is approved. Now we're on the 4.1B.
And that was the first document that you had up on the board? And this is the formal motion, and this is required language from the MSBA? And as I had noted down at the bottom of that, when we talk about this transfer, we say that the vote was taken April 16th. That's why it was important for this vote to be approved so that we could show the two funding sources that get us to the total value of the project that's listed on Form 3011 for the total project funding agreement with the MSBA. This has to be submitted to them within 90 days of that February board meeting, which would take us into May, so we're going to be early. It's always best in this case to get that right on over to them to determine if there is anything else remaining, you know, with project requirements to ensure we've got time to deal with them if there are.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and second. This is a motion to approve the appropriation for the full project. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the appropriation for the project, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries.
We may need to get a certified vote of this, maybe from the secretary, so that we can, or either maybe even the certified minutes. So that'll be something, Doc, you and I can discuss on the side on how best to get that, because they won't accept a motion, you know, just me sending it to them. It'll have to be something certified.
Whatever you need.
All right. The next item is the memorandum of understanding for the transportation contract. And if y'all could just let me know, has everyone had a chance to read the letter that I constructed regarding what we're attempting to do here tonight? And if you haven't, I really would like you to take just a couple of minutes and read through it first, because I do believe this is a very important topic, and many of you might have questions. I hope I've done enough to address them in the letter, and then we can talk very quickly about the memorandum of understanding and what we're trying to accomplish.
Tim, can you slowly scroll upward? You have the right document. Thank you.
This is Anthony. While people are reading, Curtis, are we doing this, is this letter proactive? Or are we supplying this in response to something that Vendetti has asked us?
No, this is very proactive, as indicated in here. If you haven't had a chance to read it, but if you have, I talk about letters that came out and guidance from the Commissioner of Education, from the Office of Management and Budget at the federal level, Massachusetts itself in terms of the Department of Revenue. There are statutory guidelines that, I guess you might say, can kind of rub against the fact that we're making payments or that we're encouraged to make payments because it's. or that we're encouraged to make payments because it's directly related to service provided. And in this case, you might say service not provided. What we're trying to do here, because I've been dealing with this for about three and a half to four weeks now, and we really needed to make sure people understood that when we enter a contract with a bus provider, there are stipulations in there, obviously, in terms of the age of the buses that we're willing to accept. These companies go out, incur debt, buy these buses, they're servicing multiple entities. They are still continuing to pay debt, taxes, you know, overhead costs. If they're renting storage facilities to park their buses, I want to be very clear that in the case of Vendetti and many other bus providers, not everyone, they are continuing to pay the wages for the regular routes. Clearly, this has, I believe, we started with an initial April 6 deadline, then it moved to May the 4th. At every point, their drivers have to be available to drive for us. And if they're going through the process of unemployment, they can actually stay on unemployment. So their goal is to not lay them off. And that is obviously in line with what the federal government is asking people to do. It's what we're doing now in terms of keeping people on payroll and not overburdening the unemployment system. So just to kind of put it out there, it is still supporting a great deal of cost, but there are variable costs involved, such as fuel. And maybe you talk about the wear and tear on a bus that is not occurring, replacing tires, for instance. This is a short period of time, mind you, but nonetheless, fuel is obviously not being put in to those buses. So we have been in concert, if you will, with the entire school business official community, and we are dealing with some very small mom and pop operations. We are dealing with medium-sized, such as a Vendetti, and very, very large contractors. What we have seen is around 70% to 80% of the very large contractors, or the large contractors are negotiating somewhere between 70% and 80% based on their cost structures. Medium-sized are anywhere from really 80% to 85%. And the smaller companies are anywhere from 90% all the way up to 100%. In some cases, there are literally bus companies that are providing transportation for one school system, sometimes a regional. And if they don't receive payment, they will go out of business. Clearly, when you talk about stifling competition in the transportation field, that is not a good thing. It opens up a scenario where if you've got fewer players, they can really drive the cost in any direction they want and really divide the field up very unevenly and put all school districts at a disadvantage. There's a lot of controversy in the field of transportation as it stands anyway, but Vendetti has been a very good partner. They have been working with us to determine whether or not, you know, could they be available to deliver meals when we started our program for our students? So they have been offering any way they can, much like our staff, and obviously, it can't be at the same level because they're drivers, but they are offering to do anything, but mainly to keep staff on payroll to be ready. When we say we need the drivers now, they're going to be ready to go. So I don't want people to think that, you know, while they're not literally driving kids to school, there are still costs that we need to consider from a contractual standpoint. With that, with the average being 80% to 85%, we negotiated 82.5% in terms of the rate. Here's where it gets interesting, and y'all just bear with me. Because many of our costs, as we discussed earlier, are going to be under expended, my goal in this was to pay 100% of the regular contract routes for this year. This keeps the bus vendors viable in terms of, you know, at least keeping some cash flow through the end of the year. They are not making any revenues against field trips or sports, which, when you get into May and June, that's one of their most profitable seasons. Our goal is to take the number of quantified days, which I believe is 64, yeah, 64 days, that ultimately, they will not have provided transportation to the district in terms of busing kids to and from school. That's assuming that we, and this is a worst-case scenario, that we do not come back. And it allows us to take the quantified value, which is just right around $100,000, and then our goal is to amortize that over the cost of the contract in the new year. The reason why that's important is as this crisis continues to unfold, and there's every reason to believe that we will have, you know, possibly a significant revenue impact to our operations, this will allow us to reduce those expenditures in the new year. Additionally, it will allow the bus contractor to amortize the impact of that lost revenue that should be occurring this year against a bus contract that they will hopefully be fully operational in the new year. So again, it's less of an impact to their operations when they're fully up and running. I hope that makes sense, and I'm willing to take any questions. But that was our goal, and that's what this contract represents. We do have assurances that they will not lay their drivers off. That's not going to be their intent, and that they are not applying for the CARES Act funds, which is in the form of a small business loan, which, if it is used for something as much as debt or to pay wages. And there are caveats around that. I've done some research on it. But we've got their assurances, and we'll get that in writing, and they'll certify it in their payroll weekly to us, that they are not doing that. Because if they did, we would consider that double dipping, and we would have an option to come back and renegotiate an even lower rate, which I would suggest to you, if you're talking wages, it could be upwards of 50%. Many of them, I think you're seeing, they're allocating around 50% for the larger ones for wages and 25% for some of the fixed costs. Just keep in mind that those vary by entity. If you're heavily leveraged in terms of your debt, it's going to have even a more of a detrimental impact, if you will, in terms of trying to negotiate a more favorable rate, because they would clearly need more. But we felt like this was fair and certainly in line with our colleagues who have currently gotten similar contracts negotiated. Ours was not by far the worst. We were right in the middle. So with that, I'll turn it over and see if anybody has questions or comments.
Any questions?
No questions, but I'm happy to make the motion.
I got Doc.
I'll wait till the second is made.
I'll second it.
In discussion, Joe?
Yeah.
A few points. First of all, Anthony gets his question. It was initiated on our side, and Curtis accommodated several of the aspects of this that I had requested to feel more comfortable, including that if no wages are paid, there'd be a fallback position that would reduce. A couple of things about the firm. It's been a very cooperative family-to-family, ValleyTech family-to-the-Vendetti family operation. Keep in mind, the Vendetti company bailed us out when Gulf of Maine went bankrupt. They were willing to accept that contract for the previously negotiated Gulf of Maine rate and not to gouge us in any fashion, and so there's that. And also, keep in mind that this, we've been informed, Elana and Curtis, and I'm sure the treasurer, have been monitoring closely the eligibility of these funds under the Chapter 71 Transportation Reimbursement, which you could say is roughly 70%. So that Jay Sullivan, who's the expert in the state, he has a presentation tomorrow that Elana will be participating in. And we have been informed so far that the eligibility of the reimbursement under the Chapter 71 enjoyed by regional schools would continue. So our exposure is not dollar-for-dollar in this as well. So I encourage a favorable action on the motion.
Any other questions, comments? Discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor of approving this MOU to the transportation contract, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. It is approved. Thank you very much for your work on that, Curtis and Doc. It's been easy at this time.
I'd like the committee to remember that Artie Moran voted no for the Gulf of Maine contract.
It's back to you for another awarding of the roof contract.
Kurt, you want to pick up with the 4.3? Hello?
I'll be connected. His audio is connecting.
I think I'm having a little bit of technical difficulties. He just texted me.
All right. Well, Tim, are you able to find 4.3A in the materials?
Now we can, Curtis. He's looking for bid summary is the first thing up.
Oh, okay. Did y'all approve the item?
Yes, we did. While you were honoring the pizza, we approved that.
Yeah, I'm actually on my phone now.
Doesn't make you a bad person.
Okay, so item 4.3A is our bid summary, sorry. And we wound up with seven vendors that submitted bids, and Cape Way Roofing System did come in with the low bid of $823,900. And I think when we had discussed earlier with our project funding agreement at $1,129,684, that's automatically a savings in terms of us being able to return borrowed funds of that $305,784. You'll notice that every one of them have the same HVAC filed subbid. You'll notice down at the very, very bottom of that, I've got a little star there to draw your attention to the bottom. And you're going to see one for Cam HVAC and one for Davison Company. We think there was a pretty significant error. They had somebody literally on our loading dock translating from a phone call of what to put in the documents while they submitted their bid. We don't know if it should have been $77,000, but nonetheless, that was the written amount as well as the dollar amount that was on there. So there was obviously some issue. But with only two, Davison got the filed subbid for HVAC work at $68,400. Therefore, that is buried into the total construction cost. That's why it's the same all the way down.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the.
This is Mitch. I'll make a motion. You'll accept.
Second.
Motion was second by Mr. Finn. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor of approving to Cape Way Roofing Systems, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Doc?
A follow-up question, Kurt. Any likelihood that, now that the bid has been awarded, just awarded, that the roof activity commences when, under the current rules of Massachusetts, while students are not there to be?
We're already working on it, and as I told them, I'd let them know the results of the school committee vote tonight, but they said they are ready to go. They have already gotten most of their documents together. We had five days from the date of notice to award, which was on Monday. So everything should be to us tomorrow. They were having some issues with the WMBE, which is Women and Minority Business Related Goals, if you will, for public construction projects. And he said it was COVID-related. Could we give them an extension on time? I think he's managed to do that. That was just earlier this morning. I think he may have made progress on that. So we did issue just a variance, if you will, on the timetable, but we obviously can't waive the requirement. But I don't think it's even going to need to be waived. I think he should have that probably tomorrow, no later than Monday.
Well, they can meet the rules. It's a good time to stop.
Yes. And then, did y'all make the 4.3B? That's the actual motion to approve. This was just the bid summary, so I'm not sure, because I can't see anything.
Joe, Joe? Joe? Joe, you're muted.
Yeah. That was the only thing we needed to vote on for that, so yes, was to award the bid to Cape Way.
Yes, and that's that motion to award the item B. The first one was just, okay. So if y'all did that, that's good. Thank you very much.
Nice job.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Curtis.
All right. I'm going to try to get back on, because I've got something under new business.
All right, great. All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda, the Budget Subcommittee Report. Mitchell?
Hi.
Excuse me, Joe, did we vote on that? Or it's a second?
Yeah, we did, because actually, Doc's comments actually came after the vote.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
I'll go back to sleep.
Yeah, pull up your covers.
Okay, moving along. Budget report. At this point in time, as you know, a lot of the towns have suspended operations at the town halls and are either postponing their meetings or are going to a virtual meeting as well. At this point in time, Sutton has not had a public meeting available to us. Doc has a wonderful 18-minute video on the website that he has shared with the towns, and I hope that everybody here has had a chance to view it. If not, take a minute. It's helpful, it's informative, good stuff. I actually talked with one of the members from the Sutton Finance Committees last night. He had had a few questions for Dr. Fitzpatrick, who responded appropriately and promptly to that, and he just followed up with me again, but I do feel like, overall, I feel like we have Sutton's full support of this year's budget. At this point, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Fitzpatrick, and he can talk about Douglas.
I'd like to thank all the committee members for their assistance. A little different scenario this year. It's currently predicted that the state will transition to a 1/12 budget and that the entire state budget building process will start from scratch. The current projection is the state is $5 billion under what they thought to be the revenues. So it's a significant impact. Even on my video, I did say that we weren't expected to receive, to my disappointment, and I'm sure to yours, significantly new Chapter 70-based A dollars. So if for some reason, you know, they are lower, I don't think we were particularly dependent upon that. If the state decides to, that the best way to revamp the budget process is to significantly increase the absolute minimum obligations, that would be particularly disruptive. We've been encouraging the legislators, the five state reps, the two senators, anyone else we might contact, that we, you know, we wish them the very best. We're doing anything we can to assist in the federal stimulus, but that we hope that the state will fill the gap somewhat with the rainy day fund, not wipe it out, and that that will not impact, you know, we hope, the bond rating so disproportionately that it shouldn't be considered. So we continue to respond to questions. If you hear any questions from any one of the finance committee members, the town administrators, or boards of select persons, we'll be glad to respond to them. I'm willing to go anywhere we need to go, either remotely or physically, to respond to those questions. Consistent with the agenda, in Douglas, the finance committee meeting occurred before the COVID-19 virus. Consistent with the agenda, uh, in Douglas, the finance committee meeting occurred before the COVID-nineteen virus impact. Um, the, the presentation was spirited, as it generally is in Douglas. Uh, there were, uh, some questions, uh, Doug- Douglas oftentimes likes to ask a couple of questions that they feel they require additional information over and above that which was provided. That's okay, uh, it's all part of the job, so, uh, and, uh, as Julie mentioned in Sutton, uh, we've did Q and As or responses, uh, and did the same thing in Douglas. Uh, I, I hope, uh, we have answered the questions of those, uh, in the Douglas Finance Committee that raised the questions. Uh, and certainly sent them a very detailed response. Um, following that, uh, Dave Bartlett and I, uh, presented in our host community of Upton. Dave, you want to give an overview initially, and I'll give you an update?
Alright, uh, very simply, it was well received, as it usually is, uh, we did have a handful of questions, and actually, it was uh, better attended than in past years, I feel. Uh, but, uh, no, it was well, well received, and I'll turn it back to Doc, uh, to address the funding.
Yeah, as, as Dave outlines, the, we, we generally experience a very professional, uh, exchange, uh, particularly, uh, with finance committees, uh, like, like Upton. Unfortunately, there was a subsequent development, uh, the Board of Select Persons in Upton, along with the Finance Committee met and, and decided that they had to advance a, uh, fairly significant override, uh, for the request that came from a school system other than ours. Uh, the request, uh, is, uh, basically rounded off to one to, one point two million dollars in additional funding, uh, for the other school system. And there was a decision, without any conversation with us, which is, I did find disappointing, uh, to, um, take fifty-seven thousand of the requests that we made. There's an increase in students, and there was an increase in the assessment to Upton, the first increase over several years. But in any case, the town did a projection, uh, and they, uh, their initial estimates were fifty-seven thousand fewer than our actual request. So they decided to tag our fifty-seven thousand along with the one point two million for the override. Um, when I became aware of that, uh, it was opposed by, uh, at least one member of the Board of Select Persons. Uh, the same individual volunteered to be a, the municipal agent to our negotiations, uh, before we, one of the town managers stepped forward. Uh, in any case, I've had follow-up conversations with the Finance Committee Chair and earlier today, uh, the town manager. Uh, I've been assured that we won't be surprised in that nature. Uh, we've had too good a relationship for the twenty-seven years that I've served the town, uh, to have surprises of that nature. Uh, Upton has been a good host system to us, and we have been a good friend to Upton with the number of projects and other, uh, activities that we've able, been able to assist the town. Uh, so the, the override ballot question is, is, uh, the ballot is done. It's, it's, uh, set to go, whatever date the town does the ballot release. Um, it's a single, perhaps two and a half question that incorporates, uh, one and all, that will, you know, uh, it's all or nothing relative to the, to the o- override request. Uh, if the town votes yes on the override, then that's full approval by that town of our budget. Um, and if the town votes no, uh, that represents a no vote from that town for our budget. Uh, we hope we have far greater success in the other twelve environments. Uh, so, that's the way that played out, and, and I shared that with Dave before tonight, so he was aware of that. Uh, because it happened outside of us, right? Any questions on that? Moving on. Uh, Jerry Finn and I had a, uh, remote presentation in Millville. Jerry, do you want to provide that overview?
Yeah, that took place on four, seven, um, we did the Zoom presentation. Uh, the first part of it, uh, was what we call the, um, RRI Return of Investment for the Citizens Report for Millville. I usually, uh, introduce and go through the facts and figures of that. Um, and then, um, we moved to the success of what the students have accomplished and, especially on the, uh, vocational side, so that they understand clearly that we're, we're, we're dual, uh, uh, education. And then, uh, we also moved at the end with Doc, uh, giving an assessment of what was, uh, his view of, um, what was going to be taking place with the, uh, governor's budget, as best as we could at that time. And at the same timeframe, uh, talking about some of the, um, forward-thinking projects that we have, uh, here in, uh, BVT. Uh, the things that, that were very, uh, prevalent with that was, um, the video that Doc, uh, had. I had transferred and put over to every, um, of the, all the Board of Selectment people, so they were able to see that. I also was, uh, because I was early up, uh, able to give them the hard copy booklet, uh, to both Finance Committee and to the, um, Board of Selectment, so they had, uh, the value of that as well. And we also had a Zoom approach on the actual, um, um, investment for the citizens, so. We had plenty of documentation for them to look at the leisure prior to the meeting or during the meeting. At that time, the Board of Selectment was very complimentary on that, um, and at the same timeframe, I feel very confident that we'll get a favorable vote from the Board of Selectment. Now, we're gonna be meeting again on April twenty-ninth this time, uh, remotely again. Uh, and that'll be with the FinCon. I've already headed up that. I teed it up with the FinCon folks, they've got all the details that they needed. And I've asked them for any type of questions in advance, so that Doc and I could be prepared, so that we do not waste a lot of time, uh, at the FinCon presentation. Um, I don't expect, uh, that we'll have any real difficulty with that, uh, but indeed, we want to be prepared for both, uh, for both events, so. Uh, I feel pretty good that we're gonna be able to make this, uh, come forward, and that it should be a, a positive vote for the town of Millville. Doc?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, that was Millville's first, uh, experience with remote for, for a Board of Select Persons meeting. Uh, and the newspaper, uh, also recognized that it was, uh, new turf for them. But it was a professional exchange, uh, as it has been, year after year, uh, and we don't expect, uh, a lot of resistance there relative to our request.
May, may I make one comment too? Uh, the gentleman, uh, Tim Labonte, uh, did an exceptional job of, uh, pulling together all the, um, things that were necessary for us to be able to do that remote setup. And, uh, be able to meet with all the folks that, that we had to meet with in Board of Selectment, so. Uh, Tim, again, thank you for your efforts on that, and it was well appreciated, and it's, uh, it's, it's amazing the way you can pull all these things together. So, thank you.
I certainly would second that. That's one of the reasons we recruited them for this presentation.
Exactly.
Well, thank you very much for the kind.
The Grafton FinCon presentation was remote, uh, as Joe suggested, Anthony Yitzki, he, who participated in that. Uh, through his telephone allowable communication mechanism.
Yeah, um, we, it was a Zoom, it was a Zoom meeting, just, just like this one is. Um, for about the first half of the meeting, nobody could seem to hear me. I'm not sure if that was done on purpose or not, but, um, I, I think the meeting went well, um, uh, Dr. Fitzpatrick went through the, the whole, uh, budget presentation, weren't, there weren't that many interruptions. Um, usually, the, the, the Grafton Finance Committee, um, asked a lot of detailed questions on the line items of the budget. That didn't, that didn't really happen this year. Um, they listened and, and, and pretty much, um, uh, just took notes on, on, on what was being said. Um, they liked the detail we put in, into it, and they seemed to appreciate that, uh, 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 our Budget Subcommittee took a hard look at, um, what the realistic budget was for the year. Um, there were some questions on the grants. In fact, um, uh, Dr. Fitzpatrick was, was asked about having a full-time grant writer, uh, or somebody dedicated to grant writing. And so it was something that he offered, Dr. Fitzpatrick offered to look into again. Um, as you know, when we lost our last grant writer, we haven't, uh, backfilled that position. So, um, maybe that's something we can look at again, but the, the Grafton Finance Committee saw value in having that, um, especially when they saw the sheet of grants that we had and, um, and all the effort that we put into that. Um, uh, for Grafton, the students are up a couple of, uh, heads this year. Um, that seemed to go over pretty well, um, there, naturally, that causes an increase in the budget for the town. But Grafton has been looking to increase their population, uh, at BVT. So that, that, that was, I think, perceived as, as a good thing. Um, in all, I think, I think we have the backing of the Finance Committee, I think everything went, went really well. Um, I don't, I don't see any problems, um, on the Grafton side, and I, I'll surely make myself available for any questions that the town has. There was one thing is, um, and correct me if I have the numbers wrong, Doctor, but, um, I believe the town thought that their assessment was about twelve thousand dollars less than what it, what they saw in the budget. Uh, for some reason, there was a misunderstanding or miscommunication on the preliminary number, or somebody wrote it down wrong. Um, that was discussed a little bit, because it, it was considered, well, why did, why did the, the dollars go up since we gave the, the, the preliminary number, but, um, Dr. Fitzpatrick said that that wasn't the case, that something, uh, was potentially looked at incorrectly or written down incorrectly somewhere along the line, but, um, he was able to explain that.
Uh, if I can, Lana also joined us for the presentation, uh, and on the matter of the difference, the twelve thousand, uh, we, we explained that that was a placeholder, uh, you know, estimate or guesstimate, uh, not too far off, uh, but that, that, that the, it, it was a number that was not yet voted, uh, by the school committee, and therefore it wasn't our actual budget. Uh, the Chair, Matthew Ofton, did an excellent job serving as the, uh, Zoom host, uh, and, uh, accepted that explanation, uh, that both Lana and I shared at the time. So. Anthony, we need your continuous, uh, monitoring, uh, of that, because we need everyone's help. So, we're checking with Timmy at the, as the town, as town manager, and, or, you know, Matt, uh, from the Finance Committee. Uh, appreciate if you give, give us a reading of, of their ongoing support, which we hope we can secure, so. Yep. A couple others, uh, I don't know, I reached out to Chat and asked him to, uh, reach out to the Milbury Finance Committee. Chat, do you have a chance to, to get an update, or is that still pending?
It's still pending. I've called her several times, and I'm waiting for a response. That's how we last left it, where I got you this morning.
That's fine, uh, so, uh, I spoke with the Finance Committee Chair in Mendon. Uh, we continue to have outreach, uh, in, in every direction, okay? I will, uh, and would welcome your support, um, so. I've spoken to the Town Administrator and, and, and Milford too, uh, and, and in particular, when he reached out and asked for our help with the Milford Hospital, uh, donation. So, um, received, you know, compliments about the way we do our budget, and have previously spoken with the Chair of the Finance Committee in Milford. So, we want to keep those lines open, keep the conversations going, respond to any questions. Uh, we have a powerful argument. With your support, your help, your challenge, uh, you know, um, that we, we have built, um, a blueprint that has multiple cost containment factors in it. Um, clearly, Curtis and Lana and Barbara, the whole, the entire team, and, and the willingness of everybody to work together. Um, we've been able to be a model for others, and that's why we receive calls from so many other places. There's always room for improvement, but, but when we do business the way we do business, uh, it gives us a, a solid argument to advance, and hopefully each of the towns, in spite of the current financial challenges they face, will support that. There is the possibility of nine C cuts and FY twenty-one and other adjustments. Um, we have always taken a position, if there are nine C cuts or other reductions in anticipated state aid, that, that the towns would have to live with less, we would have to live with less. So, um, at some point, we'll, we will continue to have conversations with our associations, our bargaining units and others, relative to the economic reality of, uh, the revenue stream, and so. Uh, but that's an update of, uh, as of today, as far as the budgetary activities. Any questions, Joe? Okay. Thanks, Julie.
Thank you very much, Julie. On the next item on the agenda. Mr. Steele and the Proposed Amendment for April Vacation.
Uh, before I, I get to the vote, uh, would you all like to have a rundown of the Distance Learning Plan and what we've been doing uh, for the past couple of weeks? Uh, let me say it this way, since we last met, um, if you recall, uh, Doc and I requested that you give us some leeway.
Yeah.
Or some, maybe a day or two of professional development, just in case we might have to do some distance learning. It was, I believe, the following Friday, March thirteenth, uh, that we took advantage of that, uh, we sent the kids home, and we had the faculty in. Uh, things were really heating up, uh, very quickly at that point, and by that Monday, uh, the governor had closed schools across the Commonwealth. Um, if you like, I can, uh, I'll leave it to you, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, uh, a brief summary of what the Distance Learning Plan is, what's been going on. If not, uh, we can get right into the subject of April Vacation. It's up to you.
No, let, let's please, give us an update. I know a lot of people out there are wondering how this is.
Well, uh, I'll start here, that, um, on March sixteenth, uh, we were closed by the governor uh, for a two-week, what was then a two-week period, uh, we were to return on the twenty-seventh. Um, the state had a lot of concern, uh, as the Department of Education, about, uh, any school's ability uh, to, uh, guarantee fa- free and appropriate public education for all students, and specifically, uh, access issues. Making sure that students, uh, could access their education, uh, that's a right, a civil right, uh, that everybody has, as a student from the Commonwealth. And, um, it, it was not just limited to technology or internet access or the proper equipment, but also extended into to a school's ability to make accommodations, uh, and to, again, assure that every student, uh, had equal access. And, um, because of that, these, uh, recommendations by the Department of Education uh, were that we did quote-unquote optional enrichment activities, uh, so that we, you know, encouraged to do so. That we would continue, our teachers would, uh, go on, online in a distance learning environment. Uh, however, that the work was not graded, we're cautioned very heavily not to, uh, make the work count, if you will, uh, because if it counted and a student was not able to access the curriculum, whether it be, again, a technology issue, or a special ed accommodation, or any factor, uh, essentially, uh, you were uh, holding them accountable and, and therefore damages, uh, because they weren't able to access. So we ran in that mode, uh, for that period, uh, up to the twenty-seventh. And before the end of that period, as you all know, uh, it was right around the twenty-fourth of March, uh, the extension was made. And we were closed till May fourth, and that is currently the date that we're still running on. However, a significant change and challenge to school districts across the Commonwealth was to, now that this was gonna be a, a significantly longer, uh, time period, was to, uh, take a, uh, recommendation, a couple of weeks, develop and upgrade a distance learning plan that the work would count, would be graded, the time would, uh, likewise, the learning time would also count towards promotion, graduation, et cetera. Uh, and included in that was full accountability to make accommodations for special learners, continue with health services in terms of, uh, for example, counseling, psychological services, and so on and so forth. Uh, and to, you know, fully, uh, engage in credited distance learning. No small task. Um, our staff, uh, rose to that challenge, uh, we worked for two weeks with them in collaboration to develop a distance learning plan, uh, or I should say, upgrade the previous one, uh, and we launched that on April sixth, uh, ahead of schedule. And, uh, we've been at it now since April sixth, and, um, very pleased and happy to report to you that uh, it's gone very smoothly. More smoothly than I even anticipated, and, uh, we get a lot of feedback from our, uh, parents, from our students, and also, of course, from our faculty. Uh, and I think there was, um, it was wise that we took the time we took to develop it. Uh, if you are very curious, I won't go into details, but if you go to our website under the Parent and Students, uh, tab, and the first thing there is School Year Information. It lays out, uh, all of the Distance Learning Plan frequently asked questions, uh, issues that you may have with technology. Uh, all of my community update letters that have been going out pretty regularly, um. Everything is there, so we, what was included in this was completely building a whole new section of our website that didn't previously exist. Uh, I can't say enough about all the players, uh, that have really, um, worked harder than usual, I'll say that. Uh, I don't know about your, your personal experiences, but we took our entire operation, uh, from the educational side of things and basically put it online in two weeks' time. And, uh, many have, have recognized and noticed that there really is no, uh, beginning or end to the day, the workday. Uh, and in fact, many don't even know, myself and Uh, and in fact, many don't even know, myself included, what day it is. Uh, Saturdays look just like a Wednesday. Uh, it's pretty, been pretty non-stop, but I'm happy to report that it's working very well, better than anticipated. Uh, and the kids are engaged in learning, uh, and supported. And all of those services, uh, are in place as well, uh, that, that I mentioned. So, uh, it's a good news story, a challenging one, but, um, very pleased to tell you that, uh, the staff, uh, as usual, as always, has risen to the occasion and so have the students. Uh, and we're in very good shape, considering the circumstances that we're working under. To make it happen, uh, I, I, I'm sure many of you have experienced this in your own, uh, careers and areas and fields, but an awful lot of, uh, meeting. So ironically, we see each other sometimes more than unusual these days via meetings like this one. Uh, there's frequent, uh, staff meetings, cluster meetings, academic meetings, team leader meetings, uh, admin team meetings. Uh, we've been able to very fluidly, uh, effectively convene, uh, almost easier than you can in person. Uh, it's, we, we get the Zoom links out there and, uh, meet as frequently and often as we need to, and that's been going well. Um, even the, uh, aspects of BBT life are, uh, showing good signs. So student council did a spirit week with the kids, which was nice to see. By the way, uh, yesterday they were informed that they won the gold, national gold council award, uh, second year in a row. Uh, so big congratulations to our student council and they continue to keep on trucking even in the virtual setting. Um, the, the staffer and students, uh, many reports, uh, of, you know, getting together online and the social aspect. So it's nice to hear and see that, you know, BBT life, uh, outside the classroom is still going, uh, well. Uh, and staff have been doing that as well. And so, um, all things considered, we're healthy, we're doing well. I, I'm not aware of, and I, I believe I would be, uh, none of our staff have, uh, been afflicted with COVID. Uh, some extended family members have been, uh, so that, that I can tell you, but, uh, staff and students are still very, uh, healthy in the physical sense as well. So again, I invite you, if you're curious to see the, uh, the details and it is extensive, then go check out that, uh, section under parents and students on our website and, uh, you can see all of that under school year information. But, um, it's a good news story, uh, given the circumstance. Are there any questions, uh, specifically that I could answer for you about the district learning plan?
I'd just like to say something, Anthony. Um, having a student that's a senior and dealing with this, uh, the assistance that he's had, well, all this has been absolutely amazing and watching it. And that, and I gotta give kudos to that team that put this together with that short period of time.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate that.
Hi, I get a call on it. Joe Broderick. Um, the Voc Tech side, do, are we getting, uh, feedback from them?
Everybody, Joe, yes.
Uh, I, we had a meeting on Tuesday and I guess they're talking about shortening the, uh, actual shop hours for their credentials. Was discussed for some of the, you know, electric, electrical plumbing and everything, the shop hours. And we've been working towards that and trying to get some, uh, stuff done towards that way so we can graduate these kids with their certificates. I didn't know if there was somebody tonight gonna be speaking on that.
Uh, I can, I can speak on that, Joe. I have not been, um, attending those meetings, uh, per se, with some of the, uh, specific vocational questions with the CDT office, uh, the career tech office at DESI. Uh, you know, it's, uh, when, I guess a whole group of meetings that I left out. Uh, Doc and I have never, never met so often with the commissioner of education and others. Uh, they have been very good at, at keeping us up to speed with what's going on, what they're thinking as much as they, they can. Uh, or so many say are allowed to, to say. Um, but a whole nother, uh, set of, um, meetings have been taking place specifically with vocational directors. And to Joe's question or to Joe's point, uh, several of our shops are tracked, uh, by their hours, their contact hours, and those things, uh, add up and, and lead to, uh, licensure and qualifications, uh, beyond Valley Tech. So for example, electrical, uh, uh, has hours, plumbing and so forth. And those agents, uh, uh, have been meeting with, uh, Department of Education officials to come up with fair and reasonable compromises, uh, to make sure that those students are able to graduate this year and not be, uh, punished, if you will, uh, for a shortage of hours towards, uh, what would be a normal path. Uh, so there's a lot of negotiating going on at the state level, uh, that affects all VOC schools. Uh, but it is nice to say, uh, or be able to report that it seems like they're being reasonable and flexible, uh, as to not, uh, punish the kids for the situation. Um, just on basic parameters, uh, the Department of Education guidelines, uh, and we followed them was, the, the model was to give the students approximately three hours of experience a day. Uh, normally our school day is longer than that, but you also have to, uh, balance in a whole other set of factors of what's going on, uh, you know, for a student to actually engage in this at home. Uh, the consensus from the, the parents, it was that, uh, that felt like it was right sized. Uh, we, we, same thing with the teachers, uh, and to prepare, uh, three hours a day of content. Uh, again, I think they're, they're working harder than they ever have in their, their lives to make this model work online. Uh, and so obviously, you know, when you come back now to a situation like Joe was talking about where a shop is counting specific, uh, you know, minutes of the day and hours of the day, uh, it's not adding up to the equivalent experience. Uh, but you know, rest assured that, uh, those trades that are hour specific, uh, have been flexible.
Just wanted to follow up on, uh, Anthony's point. I've seen it from the college perspective as well, that the state has been having some, uh, flexibility with the, uh, contact hours specific to students, uh, in their internships and whatnot. Um, and then the second Paul's point, um, the administration has done an exceptional job. Uh, as a parent, I've seen seamless transition has been, it's been great. Nice job.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ben.
Any other questions or, or comments specifically on, on the distance learning plan aspect? Okay, um, one topic or issue, I guess I'll say that came up, uh, is the topic of April vacation. I will, uh, kind of back up a, a minute here. Um, there are some unknowns for us. We don't know if we're coming back to school this year. Uh, as of the, this morning, 26 states had decided that they were done for the year, that they were going to remain in the distance learning model, uh, for the remainder of the year. Uh, just later this afternoon, I heard New Hampshire, uh, joined, joined that, so it make it 27. Uh, if, if I'm accurate on that, if not, I'm close. Uh, and it's likely that that is going to be our, our scenario also. So, you know, we, um, at this point plan for multiple scenarios, uh, and each day, uh, it gets a little clearer, uh, what's, what our likelihood is going to be. Uh, so understand that we're planning for multiple, uh, scenarios and, and everything, including graduation, uh, school closure and things like that, um, even just basic closeout procedures with kids and students and so forth. So, you know, we have quite a bit on the short range planning and a ton on the long range planning, uh, to, to keep us running smoothly. We really, um, have, like I said, uh, on April 6th, uh, launched this new upgraded distance learning plan. Essentially took everything we have and, uh, put it up the, uh, the fiber optic cable, uh, to the kids. It's a, it, it was smooth out of the gate, as I said, but it's, uh, um, no doubt an adjustment, a big adjustment for everybody. Uh, I did hear a lot of feedback from parents, uh, and, uh, staff members to please consider, uh, you know, allowing us to work through the April vacation. Uh, the rationales for that were, were, there were several. Uh, the main one, the most thematic one, uh, was for continuity, that they felt like they were just really getting a good momentum going. Uh, and to stop now to take a vacation, uh, didn't seem to make sense, uh, to both parents and, and staff members. Some cited the obvious, uh, it's not much of a vacation. If I have nowhere to go, uh, I might as well stay here and stay productive. Uh, I even had, uh, some, some parents practically, you know, begging me to say, you know, can you just keep the education going? I'm, it's hard enough, uh, to keep my youngster indoors and practicing in social distancing. If you turn school off for a week, uh, it's, it's going to be, you know, really difficult and, and it's been good having them engaged. Uh, and so can we please just continue? You, uh, some have cited the quality of educational time. Uh, they, given the circumstances right now, uh, is, uh, where things are going well, seems to be optimal time versus, uh, the last week or third week in June, uh, when it is, um, traditionally this is a less than optimal, uh, for student engagement. And they'd rather, uh, use the time now than on the backend. Uh, and so, you know, that's all anecdotal, uh, things that have been coming in many forms. Um, just for comparisons, uh, if you will, uh, we have a compilation of districts and what their choices have been. Uh, it's roughly two thirds, uh, so I'd say in our, in our larger region, bigger than the valley, um, uh, but in the region in the state, uh, roughly two thirds of the schools have elected to work through April vacation. There's a subset of them that did a hybrid, uh, of that. So they're taking a few days and working a few days. And then, uh, the minority third, uh, deciding to keep the vacation. So we, uh, we did the next, uh, obvious step, but I wanted to know what the sentiment of our faculty was. I wanted to go beyond, uh, just something anecdotal. Uh, so at our faculty meeting, uh, just this week, uh, yesterday, uh, surveyed the, uh, the faculty, we had a hundred and, uh, hold on, let me just pull it up here. Hundred and seventy-three respondents, uh, to that. So we got just about everybody at the meeting there. I think there were a hundred and eighty at the meeting. Uh, of them, um, let's see here. The question read this way, "I prefer working through the planned vacation week scheduled for Tuesday, April 21st through Friday, April 24th, with the understanding that the current school year end date would be amended from June 22nd to June 16th." So that was the, the question as I worded it. Uh, again, this was a mix of both, uh, the teachers and support staff, essentially all of our, our employees, all our staff. And, uh, they answered that, uh, in the affirmative at ninety-seven percent, uh, ninety-six point four, to be, uh, precise. Uh, so if you want to round down or round up, but let's say in excess of ninety-six percent. Uh, I was also curious just to know, uh, how many, um, a hundred and four of them or sixty percent, uh, are bargaining unit members, sixty-nine of them or forty percent, uh, are not bargaining unit members. Uh, furthermore, I believe that's, uh, what's on your screen share there. Uh, I asked, uh, the union president to, uh, capture that. To be clear, uh, Doc and I spoke about it, uh, Mike Norton and I spoke about it. We, um, are not talking about, um, Monday, the 20th, which is the Patriots Day. Uh, we would observe that, uh, in this proposal. We would take that Monday off, so effectively a long weekend for everybody. Uh, you, you do get a little break, uh, with the long weekend, uh, and then work through Tuesday, the 21st through the 24th. Um, the association, again, obviously you can see with ninety-seven percent, uh, of our staff, uh, thinking this is a good idea. Uh, they felt that there was no need to, uh, impact bargain, as you can see in the, uh, letter that Mike Norton has written, uh, to Doc here, uh, that it is a, um, volunteer action by both parties, uh, to, uh, do this, uh, and amend the, the school calendar accordingly. I'm happy to answer any, uh, questions that you have about it or rationale about it, but, uh, essentially, uh, we're all thinking that it is, uh, a, the best case scenario for us. What we're seeking from you is, uh, essentially permission to amend the calendar so that we can work Tuesday through Friday.
You need that in a motion? This is Mitch.
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion. Do we amend the calendar?
I'll second it. Motion made and second to amend the calendar in accordance where we would work through those four days of school vacation and amend the final day of school to June 16th. The motion's made and second, Doc, do you have a comment?
I, I think, Mr. Broderick first.
No, I was just saying, it's me making a motion.
Yeah, um, I'd like to point out that many school systems, according to the presentations by superintendents and otherwise, have indicated that they have not been able to launch their distance learning or other modifications without sitting at the bargaining table for exchanges. Very formal, very legalistic. We have, uh, as Anthony outlined, we've experienced nothing but I'll say perseverance and professionalism. Uh, and the feedback from parents has been, and students, has been very heartwarming, uh, and encouraging. Uh, in light fashion, uh, a topic such as working through the vacation and, and modifying, uh, ironically, the initially unplanned last day would be, was one day later, June 17th. So, uh, a request of this nature, uh, like the distance learning is being advanced on a, uh, a friendly, uh, exchange, uh, outside of the, um, you know, the bargaining process, outside of the union activities. Uh, I hope there's no expectation on either side, uh, that this has a quick, uh, you know, benefit, uh, for the subsequent negotiations when they do commence. Uh, this is an indication that we're responding, as Anthony has done. He did the survey activity that I, that I asked, uh, and, um, we have a clear message from our parents, uh, who are kind of our major stakeholders. So I would encourage the support for the recommendation. Uh, and it's a straight trade-off, four days for four days, it through the remote learning process.
One more quick question?
Yes.
Um, does this affect the seniors or the seniors just gonna stay right to what their normal day was?
Uh, yeah, essentially, uh, seniors were already slated to, uh, be out and graduated, uh, by then. Uh, so I don't believe, uh, it really has an impact, uh, to our seniors in that way.
Okay, I'm just asking.
No, they follow the early release schedule.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, discussion?
This is Dave Bartlett. Uh, based on, uh, the support of everybody involved, from the teachers to, uh, staff to, uh, administrative staff to the parents, I don't think there's much question as to how I'm gonna vote.
I, I can assure the committee that if the distance learning effort wasn't working, we would not advance this to you.
Greatly appreciate that. I know that this seems to be working. I've heard a lot of great things up and down the valley about how distance learning has been working and how advanced preparation made all the difference in the world. So. I want to thank you, Anthony and Doc, and make sure the, um, association understands that we greatly appreciate them working through this and being so flexible and making sure that, you know, the kids came first in this and that we're able to continue the education for them. Really appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of amending the school calendar accordingly, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, calendar may be amended. Thank you very much for bringing that forward and for working with the associate to get this done.
Joe, Anthony?
Yes.
Questions been raised outside of us, whether or not we're doing all that we can do to promote the census response of the count. Uh, is that, if it isn't, can that continue to be something else we would add? As we've talked about pursuing scholarships and portfolios and a variety of other aspects, but, uh, encouraging all the families to properly complete the census is a good thing to do as well.
Absolutely.
So, might want to add that to the suggestions.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Next item up, Mr. Hanrady. Next item up, Mr. Hanrady.
Um, the policy subcommittee met and I was on the phone at the time and everybody else was on Zoom. So at this point, I'm gonna ask Anthony to take over and explain it all because he is so much more, uh, involved with it than I am.
I'm more zoomed up these days. Okay, uh, well, this is actually, um, another one of those, uh, Zoom meetings that we had. Um, uh, let's see here. Let me just look. I have the files here. I don't know if, um, is it Tim has any track change documents for you to look at? Uh, yes, there they are. Uh, so all of, let me just say, uh, on all of these, all four of these items we're going to be looking at, uh, they were essentially regulatory edits that we were making to, uh, bring ourselves into alignment with some things that had changed, uh, at the federal level. Um, let me just minimize down here for a second. Um, I'm not sure if I would be better off following, uh, Tim. Tim, if you can keep scrolling down until we find some red.
There you go.
The, yeah, the red would indicate, uh, a change, obviously. Uh, so your new language is, is in red. Uh, Curtis had quite a bit to do with, uh, actually making these edits, uh, in person. You may recall back, uh, when Barbara and myself and Curtis presented, um, the student activity audit and, uh, in just previously, the one we just had, uh, and they had some recommendations for us. So one of the recommendations was dealing with, uh, defunct student activities accounts. Uh, and this language gives us the ability, uh, to, uh, deactivate, if you will, uh, a student activity account that has been dormant for a period of two years or more. Uh, we did not have policy, uh, previously that, that said this. So this basically allows us to be compliant with that, that, um, recommendation that was made by the auditors. Uh, so we, uh, went to MASC, found some applicable, uh, policy for that, uh, compliance, and this is it in front of you here. Uh, so that constitutes that change. Uh, and Tim, if you can keep scrolling down, I think there's a little more to it. That's, yeah, that's it. Just the references to the policy. That's, uh, one E. Uh, Jeff.
Right.
Would you like me to move on to the next?
We'll go to
Yep.
Next one.
Uh, the next one on our agenda. Okay, I'll go to, uh, let's see. Do you have IGB? Tim, can you find IGB?
Support Services, if that's how.
Support Service Programs, IGB. And again, Tim, if you can scroll down to, till we find some red. Okay, there's some. Uh, so essentially, uh, we were also making some amendments to bring us into, uh, compliance with our Title I program. Uh, not that we were not in compliance previously, uh, but some guidelines changed around, uh, Title I regulations across the country. Uh, and specifically, we have been, uh, using Title I for targeted support in reading, math, and science. Uh, and so we added this into the, uh, line under Support Services that we offer from the school. Tim, you can keep scrolling down.
One's only one page, Anthony.
That's it. Okay, that's all we have on that one. There's some more Title I coming up. Uh, let's see. Next item for us, uh, IGB, let's go to JFF. No, we did JFF. Sorry.
The Organization of Instruction, I think, was, uh, not done yet.
Yep. And you have, uh, Organization of Instruction, IE. There we go. So this is just a clarification of how we identify students for Title I services. Uh, we, we use, uh, placement test scores, uh, specifically, um, students are incoming to the school, uh, and we also, obviously can continue to assess them, uh, throughout their four years with us. Students who, uh, score at a certain level, uh, on the test, the, uh, families are offered, uh, the parents and students are offered Title I services for reading, math, and science, uh, assistance. And, um, this just identifies that we use, uh, placement test scores to, for that process. We'll scroll down some more, Tim.
This looks almost like a brand new policy.
Uh, only that the things in red are the new items that we added. Uh, keep coming, keep going down. Okay, hold up there. So again, uh, Title I underwent, uh, some significant revisions at the federal level. Uh, and basically, we also, some of this, uh, has been very much standard practice, for as much of it, actually. Um, what we've done here is included the requirements, uh, of Title I. For example, the family engagement, uh, is one aspect of that. We have always done multiple outreaches for parents. Um, Title I has always had a component or several components of it, uh, that we communicate uh, with our parents about what exactly we offer, uh, for assistance with our Title I program funds. Um, we've been strategic about doing that. For example, at open houses, uh, and, you know, parent teacher night, uh, we will have our Title I instructors, uh, set up to give their presentations. We found that if we do them standalone, uh, it's sometimes you don't get, uh, the desirable attendance. So we've thoughtfully, uh, done these at events where there are already, uh, parents, uh, in the building and so forth. Some of this is, uh, basically just being transparent, uh, with people about, you know, what services we're offering, how we select students to uh, receive those services, uh, and, uh, making sure that, uh, all of that again has a very public transparent, uh, process to it. Uh, Tim, you can keep scrolling down to the parent involvement section. And so this, uh, essentially lays out specifics about what we do at those curriculum nights, as I mentioned, um, uh, exactly what we, topics we're covering. You can keep scrolling down, Tim. This gets into, uh, the specifics, uh, about, uh, students and parents, uh, making a choice to take advantage of this support. Uh, things like parent orientation and curriculum nights is again more outreach and, and how we're accomplishing that. Families being invited, encouraged to attend and take, take advantage of these. What we do with non-native speaking families. Obviously, we, uh, have interpreters and translators. We also put things out in multiple languages. And Tim, if you can keep scrolling down to the commitment and literacy compact. So obviously, uh, these are things, uh, promise, uh, raise if you will, of what we, uh, vow to do for our students, uh, who qualify. It's also a statement about us making sure that we're transparent about said, uh, compact and, and what we're promising to do for families and services we're offering. You can keep going down, Tim. This gets into the legal aspects of a parent's right to know, uh, and information about, uh, their students and, um, things about, this is what I would put in the category of the school or the district report card. Performance of the school, certifications of their, uh, educators, there's their sons and daughters' teachers, qualifications. Uh, this isn't new in practice, although it's, uh, a new in policy for us, but this has been uh, essentially part of Title I, uh, since I've been working at the school, uh, which is a little while now. And of course, the references, uh, to, uh, Black Stone Valley's, uh, district profile, uh, on TESI's website. Any questions about that one? Okay. And I think, do we have one more? Uh, IHBD, compensatory education. Uh, this echoes much of the language we just went over. Uh, if you want to keep going down, Tim, we've already discussed family engagement, parent involvement, decision-making. Yep, keep going. Okay, we've, uh, there's nothing new there to keep going. That's it.
All right.
Again, all of this. All right, Chad, I'll go back to you at this point.
I make the motion that we approve all the revised policies that were proposed to us tonight.
I'll second that.
Motion made and second to approve all four of the proof of the policy revisions and approvals that were presented tonight. Questions, comments, discussion? Doc?
Uh, just want to thank the Policy Subcommittee, uh, as Anthony outlined and as Chad referred, th- these are compliance actions. Looks like a lot to digest. Uh, it, you know, however, uh, it's really complying with the federal government to avoid any complications. Uh, and it, it's not really a point for arguing, uh, we, we, you know, the entire state of Massachusetts educational system has to be compliant with the federal guidelines. And so we're simply, uh, aligning ourselves and, and updating ourselves to be current with that. Also, the handbook is something which is eventually voted by the school committee and filed with the state and becomes a legal document relative to behavioral, uh, guidance.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor of approving these policies, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. The policies are approved. Thank you very much to the Policy Subcommittee and Anthony for their work on these.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Fitzpatrick.
Yeah, I'd like to certainly take a moment to express appreciation to everybody for their flexibility, uh, confidence and support. Uh, it's, our medal has been tested, uh, and it's, it's great to see the response. Uh, and I've received communications from a number of people, graduates who have offered to help with the tutorial assistance, for people learning from, from the distance process, uh, from, uh, you know, employers, uh, you know, phone calls, texts, the whole variety of, and, and of course, emails coming in left and right, but, uh, the, they've been very flattering, if you will. They've been very complimentary and I want to convey that that would only be possible, um, you know, with the leadership team that we're blessed to have, uh, and Anthony's, uh, over and above, uh, Curtis, the whole, whole team, just, uh, phenomenal. Uh, honored to be associated. Uh, the next item is the COVID nineteen. Uh, a few of the activities to highlight some of the things. Uh, some time ago, the town manager from Milford reached out to me and asked for us to consider making a donation of, uh, the, uh, health, safety equipment, uh, in the sense of masks and gloves, uh, other items, uh, that we could spare without endangering what we would need for our own students to return. Uh, I suppose someone could say if everybody's gonna wear all the equipment, then you're probably not gonna be returning. But in any case, we were glad to do that. Um, Milford Hospital, uh, is, uh, has been a partner. In fact, they have a satellite setting within our building and uh, so they, they have a special relationship and we have that with them. Did receive nice messages of appreciation for that. Even that was done on a Saturday with the help of different people. Sometime after that, Senator, uh, Moore and Senator Fatman and their staff reached out and asked for our assistance in generating additional masks, uh, whether or not we could do that through the three D printing, uh, you know, options that we had. Ironically, the governor said, "Don't go in your buildings. Don't have people in your building." So, uh, that's where the three D printers were. That was a small obstacle for us. The staff, um, came in on a staggered basis, uh, and, uh, collected the three D printers and brought them out. Some of the students volunteered to, to work on that as well. Uh, so they've been manufacturing, uh, uh, the, the major frame of the three D printers and working with two other, uh, vendors, uh, to assist in that response. With Curtis and the food service, uh, people and culinary arts as well, uh, an elaborate nutritional program has been in operation, uh, helping with free and reduced lunch or others who, uh, need access. Uh, when we created the, the convenient grab and go process, it became another way to maintain distance, protect people, uh, but also give out the, uh, computer devices to increase the ability of students to be effective with the distance learning. Uh, we have had, uh, the personnel come into the building, coordinated with, with the principal, coordinating with facilities, uh, and others relative to, on a staggered basis to keep things, uh, up to par relative to a number of, uh, essential services. Uh, Representative Soder reached out to us recently and asked for assistance in some printing, uh, that he wanted to, uh, advance, uh, to his constituents. Uh, and also asked that, that, uh, we could assist in having our students do letters and cards to shut-ins or other people who, uh, had been isolated. Uh, we were able to accommodate both of those situations and we received appreciation for that. Uh, we're also assisting other hospitals and nursing homes via collaborative efforts. Uh, we're not in a position to give away the, the resources of the district. Um, you know, we, we, uh, we take very seriously, uh, our community service role, and so we're, we do what we can in this process. And like everyone else, we're expected to maintain all the cautions and distance factors, uh, to protect everyone. Any questions on, it's a, a, a highlight, if you will, of some of the things we're doing in the COVID nineteen? No. Uh, moving on, we have several notifications of retirement also updated with the updated agenda. Um, Michelle Boucher, uh, former teacher assistant, uh, certainly a valuable contributor, uh, to our school assisting, uh, provided. It is, Timmy's putting up her, her letter right here, uh, and typical fashion, and, you know, I write my little anecdotes, um, but we wish Michelle, uh, the very best. Um, she, uh, she was active also in the area of dance programs. Seems like that other things that our students were involved. So we, we will miss her. We wish her the very best. The second request that came in, I want to call that one up, Tim, was, uh, a, you know, long-term instructor in informational technology, uh, Walter Ramsey. Um, Walter Ramsey, uh, is, uh, you know, is, 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 has been known to create a, a jovial environment, entertaining environment, uh, which students, uh, felt comfortable, uh, and indicated to us that there's some health considerations here that, uh, contributed to this decision. Uh, we, we wish him the very best as, as well, uh, and you, uh, at this point, I had to do my, my message remotely. So that's why you find it in that fashion. We do wish him the very best. The more recent communication, uh, came in. Next one, Tim. Thank you. Kyle Pocelli, okay, is a, uh, an instructional staff member, uh, in the Career Enrichment Program. Uh, he wrote a, a, a very, uh, nice cover letter and also, uh, you know, crafted this message, conveying special appreciation uh, to, to the principal, uh, rightfully so, uh, and to the system. We respect Kyle's decision, uh, career decisions, uh, and, uh, once again, uh, he was a valuable asset. We wish him the very best. That concludes the report, uh, on the, uh, notifications of, of retirements. Joe, you're muted, Joe. Joe, Paul, Joe? Muted.
I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. No problem.
Second, as I get back on track, as my own technical difficulties, new business. Before we jump to Curtis, do any members of the school committee have any new business to talk about tonight?
Um, this is, this is Anthony. Ju- just one thing, Doc, um, you had mentioned earlier that, um, Curtis might need is You had mentioned earlier that Curtis might need a certified copy of the minutes. If you need me to come down and sign the minutes or anything like that, let me know. I can be available tomorrow.
I don't know if it's the minutes of today's meeting he's going to need, not the one, not the ones we approved. Correct, Doc?
Is Curtis still online?
Yeah, can y'all hear me?
Yeah. Curtis, the question's up. What documentation do you need to satisfy MSBA?
What we would need is a recap of the minutes like you normally do, and then it's certified by the secretary and signed.
Okay.
So it won't be done tomorrow, just.
That's right, the minutes won't be available tomorrow.
I, I know, that's when Anthony said he could be available, I said they won't be. So if we can focus on getting those done maybe by next week or maybe the following week, that would give us time to get it in. The sooner the better.
That we're.
Okay, just let me know.
Okay, perfect. All right, that's who we'll shoot for. Amy, hopefully that we can accommodate that.
New business from the school committee. Skip a line. Curtis, you have something to bring forward tonight?
Yeah. I, I do, and sorry, I kept getting booted out of the system. But what, what we needed to do, y'all, traditionally, we do this every two years. It's not our goal to continue raising prices for student lunch, but it is a federal regulation. And there is a strict calculation that you move through, and they do allow you the option to do this every other year. What you have before you, there's actually a motion, and I can't see. Well, if y'all can get that up, there's an actual motion behind the calculations. And if we wanted to start with that and then come back and look at very quickly the numbers, yeah, there's your motion. So if y'all wanted to get that on the table.
I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move. Chad hand ready.
I'll second. Dave Bartlett.
Motion made and second to increase the school lunch. I believe it was 15 cents. It just went away.
That is correct. It is.
Yes, it's just 5% I saw.
That is correct. So what we just want to say, there's a lot of numbers on this, and we do this really by the calculation that's kind of consolidated and reduced to a piece of paper. But ultimately, there are two components, and they're at the very top of the amounts for 2019, where we talk about all lunches, regardless of a status, get 32 cents reimbursement. That includes a full pay student. And there is what they call an additional six cent certification. You'll see now it looks to be seven cents, but that is the title of that law that came in. I think it's been probably six years now. So those two components total 39 cents. And what they ask us to do is basically take that away from the, the, the highest amount of federal reimbursement available for free lunch. And that should be what we're comparing the prices of our lunches to, and then you round from there. So when you take the maximum reimbursement for a free student, which if you look at your components up above, it's the $3.09, and then you add the seven cents and the 32 cents, because all lunches get those, that's where you get the $3.48. And then you subtract away those two components that are common reimbursements to all. And then you compare it to our lunch price. Currently, we're at $3. And, and the difference that they're, they're marking you at is the 3.09. And then you go through the actual calculation for the percentage increase, and that's 2% above the current CPI. And that's that 4.94. So when you do the $3 times that roughly 5%, you get 15 cents added to. And then you compare that $3.15 total to the maximum reimbursement allowed under the calculation above, which is $3.09. And that's where you determine whether or not you need to increase the price of your lunch, which we do. The one thing I would say, the goal of this is to make sure that the free and reduced lunch program and the reimbursements that are, that pertain to those students are not supplementing full pay students. So if your prices were arbitrarily too low and you were getting that additional money from the federal government in relation to a free student or a reduced student, that's what they don't want to happen. So they want to ensure equity in terms of support for the school lunch program, that full pay students are paying their share. That's roughly the reasoning behind it. So with that, I'd probably ask if anybody has any questions or concerns about this. It has been two years since we've raised the price, and, and this is in accordance with the law.
Do we have any other questions with regard to raising the school lunch?
If I may, Curtis, we really don't have a choice on this, do we? I mean, your calculations, as difficult as they may be, demonstrate to us we have to have a 15 cent increase. Whether we like it or not, we need to have it, correct?
Um, you do, but I would say this one thing, that they allow you, if you wanted to not raise the price of lunch and you wanted to supplement it with either existing fund balance in your school food services, which if you had more than what they call three months of operating cash, that would show that you're probably charging too much, and they would ask you to reduce that price using those internal resources. Right now, we don't have that problem, and if you think about what's happening with COVID, we've got expenditures for salaries coming out of there, but we do not have the revenue now coming into the fund. So if anything else, you know, we don't need, or we can't rely on the resources in the food service program. Having said that, could you supplement that with operating fund sources? The answer to that is yes. I do ask everybody to keep in mind a couple of things. We only have a 15% free and reduced population in our school right now. There's 178 applications on file. That's over to the right. I would say this, though, there is an EBT program that has just been initiated, and we are going to be providing data to the state concerning our free and reduced population. And as they begin qualifying for additional state services because of employment issues, we are going to probably see an uptick in that amount. The bottom line, though, is generally speaking, given the small portion of free and reduced students, that the full pay students should be pulling their fair share. And if, if you think about the district supporting 85% of that, it's probably not, I wouldn't say not a wise thing to do, but there's no need for us to actually supplement that with general fund resources. I need y'all to keep in mind that we do currently pay 100% of the fringe benefits, but we do have a fairly, I would say, robust program in terms of the collections of revenue to support the salaries and the cost of the food. So from that perspective, we are able to not rely on any support other than the fringe benefit portion from the general fund. And if we ever saw that balance go to a level that warranted us using those resources to bring the price of lunch down, we would.
Thank you.
Joe. Joe, Joe Hall, you're muted again.
Anyone I do that? Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor of raising the cost of school lunch, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Curtis.
Thank you.
That was the summary of Jerry Finn's Farmer Work World.
Next item on the agenda is items for the good of the committee. I apologize very, we aren't able to print them out for you, but if you look at the attachment in the agenda, got all the links of what we need. So it's a little shorter, but it's easier to forward along for someone else, if you would. But if you'd like a hard copy, let Doc know. I'm sure it will take care of it. And then next regularly scheduled school committee meeting, May 21st. Hopefully, we'll be back in the building, but if not, I'm sure we'll, we'll be willing and able to do this again as needed. And seeing as we completed our agenda, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Bill Broderick makes a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second. Jerry Finn.
Made a second to adjourn. Questions, comments, discussion?
Thank you, everybody.
Favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for working with us on this, and here's to a successful first Zoom with school committee meeting for us.